Welcome to this, the regular meeting of the Council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Elgin. It is Monday, June the 24th. Welcome those who are here in the chamber, as well as those that are joining us online. If I could ask for those in the chamber to join, and if they wish to, or to stand, and if they wish to join us in the singing of the National Anthem. Thank you. The municipality of Central Elgin acknowledges that it is located on the land of the McKee Treaty that was signed by the Wyandotte and by Anishavi nations, including ancestors of Chipewas of the Thames First Nation. It is also the traditional territory of the Hattisani, Atawandurunk, and Mississauga Nation. These First Nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters in the municipality of Central Elgin. Counsel, does anyone have a disclosure of peculiar interest? I have to state a conflict of interest. I have a conflict of interest with the Central Elgin Planning Office, CEP 2224, Consent Application on 44828 Fruit Ridge Line. The, I have a peculiar interest because I have a financial relationship with one of the applicants. Now, on to the next piece, Delegations. We have with us this evening, Mr. Julian Novick from Westdale Homes. Julian, would you like to come forward, please? Julian's here to discuss the proposed Kokomo Park Concept Plan. Julian, if you could just press the button, though I think you're no stranger to presenting to council. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I am Julian Novick from, representing, representing Westdale Homes and the Kokomo Beach Club. Joined with me tonight are a group of our members, many of whom are, all of tonight are in favor of Kokomo Park, representing our sort of outstanding engagement that we did with the parks plan. When we polled our members, we found that eighty-four percent of our members were in favor of our park concept plan, including pickleball at Kokomo Park. So, I'm here tonight in part to explain our concept plan to the council, as well as answer any questions you may have. I would like to also recap, when we started Kokomo back in 2018, it was a different council, a bit of a different time. I think at that time Kokomo was a lot more contentious than maybe it is today, but even back then, the common theme that we heard from residents of Port Stanley and potential buyers alike was that we want pickleball at Kokomo. So, we've carried that through to today, and we've been advocating for that ever since that started, and we're happy to be at the point in the development where the park is starting to come to fruition, and we were committed to continuing that, so. If you can see on the screen here, this is our concept plan for Kokomo Park. The park includes pickleball courts, a playground, benches, pathways, trees, and a parking lot. As we know, the park would be used primarily by local people, but with tournaments and other, it's just the draw of a new park, you may get people from outside the general area who choose to drive, and we thought that would be a necessary amenity to provide. We hear the concern sometimes with on-street parking, and we thought a park would be prudent, or parking lot would be prudent to provide in the park. The park is split up into two phases to match the phasing of our apartment construction. Phase one of the park is designed so it could be built now, and it would not have to wait until the other buildings are complete. Often in subdivision development, we wait till everything is done and then put in the park, and that's not what we want to do here. We wanted to come forward and build the park sooner. Part of that is, we have offered to contribute over a quarter million dollars to the park of our funds, to both accelerate development of the park and to pay for the pickleball that we think is important in the park. So, we would like to do that, and we're ready to start that construction right away if approved. I believe further on the agenda tonight is an item that includes our budget for the park. Obviously, if that budget represents construction of this concept plan, and it includes the contribution as shown, it's sort of buried in there, but we're still committed to doing that. So, yeah. Yeah, in closing, I think we, sorry, in closing, I hope that you guys can support the Kokomo Park Concept Plan and our contribution there, too, and if you have any questions, we're available.
Thank you. Questions and comments? Counselor Graham, please. Thank you, Mr. Novick. Do you want to come forward? I think the question's for you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, how many respondents there were?
Okay, thank you. Yep, follow-up, Counselor Graham.
What hours are you proposing for the courts?
So, we're not proposing any specific hours. That would be, the park is ultimately a municipal park, and the hours of operation would be up to the municipality. Our subdivision agreement requires that we turn the park land over to the municipality as soon as it's complete and ready for use. So, our intention would be to follow that already existing agreement with the town and continue to do that as soon as the work's done. And then you guys could, sorry, your council or staff could set rules, anything within that.
We might even do it together. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Novick? I was seeing, I think a lot of the people in the gallery are here for this file, is that correct? Counsel, would there be agreement if we move ICS 1824 Kokomo Park Concept Plan up on the agenda so that we could discuss now? Can you move it? Great, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, I'm going to start, we have on the agenda the actually Option Two, but I'm going to ask for a mover and a seconder for Option Two, and then we can either look at an amendment putting Option One on, or we will start discussion afterwards. But if I could get a mover and a seconder for the agenda item? I thought we had to. No, we're beginning with Option One, so.
Thank you, and through you, to be clear, Option One is the option where we do go forward with the pickleball courts. Is that, may I move that?
Okay. I need a seconder. Counselor Bachman. You're okay to read that when you have a moment, Ms. Leach? And that's Option One, please.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Helpin, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that report ICS 1824 regarding the Kokomo Park Concept Plan be received for information, that Option One be approved, being to move forward with the inclusion of pickleball courts in Kokomo Park, Port Stanley, per the concept plan, and that the municipality enter into a cost-sharing agreement with Westdale Developments for the construction of Kokomo Park.
Questions or comments from council? Seeing none, if I could get the vote, if I could call the vote, please. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. I don't know.
Order, order, order!
Thank you very much, and thank you, Julian, and thanks to Westdale, and thanks, everyone else, for coming out. It's always nice to have some people here, especially when they're clapping, and we've apparently done something right. So, thank, thank, thank you very much. It sure beats the alternative. You're welcome to stay for our meeting, you're welcome to enjoy the evening, you're probably going to prep for a sporting event this evening, so maybe we'll see some of you later at the, that's right. So, again, on behalf of council, thank you very much. Thank you. Moving on to correspondence, requiring action, SE 1724, Request for Food Truck Approval, Hot Air Balloon Ride for MS. Could I get a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Bachman and Counselor Watson. Thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Watson, that report SE 1724 regarding request for food truck approval, hot air balloon ride for MS bike be received for information, and that an amendment to the previously approved special events permit for the hot air balloon ride for MS bike event to be held on July 3rd, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. be approved to allow the inclusion of food trucks, subject to the conditions outlined below.
Questions or comments from council? Seeing none, all those, sorry, Counselor Helpin, did you have a question?
Sorry, I just received a message informing me that the black screen that we're getting up here is exactly what residents are getting.
Arrested and unable to hear.
You know what, I'm not sure, we can try to find that out. If you'd like to pause, or we can continue.
Shall we take a couple of minute break? What does, what usually happens in these situations? New, new, new territory for the mayor here?
Mayor Sloan, I'll just note that I believe it is the cameras that are malfunctioning this evening. It appears that the audio is working, if we can get confirmation of that.
Thank you. Okay to proceed? Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none, if I could call the vote, please, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried, thank you. SE 1824, Special Events Application for a Beach Wedding Proposal. If I could get a mover and a seconder. Counselor Connors. Counselor Helpin, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Connors, seconded by Counselor Helpin, that report SE 1824 regarding Special Events Application Beach Wedding Proposal be received for information, and that the Special Events Permit for the Beach Wedding Proposal Event to be held on July 1st, 2024, from 8:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. be approved, subject to the condition outlined below.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Graham, please.
Just a couple of questions. So, is someone going to be inspecting, like, the cleanup of the fireworks? Are we having them have $5 million? Is there a licensed pyrotechnician onboard?
This is the wedding, correct?
Yeah, but they're having fireworks at it. No, it's the proposal, it's not a wedding, actually. It's just proposing to get married, I think.
Or the proposal of the proposal. Ms. Leach, would you like to respond, please?
Mayor Sloan, through you to Counselor Graham. These two matters were discussed during the Special Events Committee Meeting last week. The applicant confirmed that the group, the organizer group, will be taking care of any cleanup, and they clarified that the proposed fireworks in question are installed at the ground level and shoot just upwards. There was a submitted photo, but it did not come through with the application. So, it's a lot smaller in scale, as opposed to a full-on firework show. They take place in the daylight, just to create a dynamic photo. There will be a photographer there for that purpose. And through that discussion, the committee determined that it would not be considered a typical fireworks display, and thus would not require the $5 million of insurance, and so the committee felt prepared to make its recommendation to council as outlined in the report.
Thank you. Follow-up, Counselor Graham.
So, at what height does it require $5 million liability?
Mayor Sloan, through you to Counselor Graham. At this time, I do not have information on the distinction. I will confirm that this discussion took place with the fire chief, though, who provided that insight, but I can get that information in follow-up.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried, thank you. SE 1924, Special Events Application, Port Stanley, Canada Day Fireworks, June 30th, I believe, there to be held. If I could get a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Graham? Counselor Connors?
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Graham, seconded by Counselor Connors, that report SE 1924 regarding Special Events Application, Port Stanley, Canada Day Fireworks, 2024, be received for information, and that the Special Events Permit for the Port Stanley, Canada Day Fireworks, 2024 event, to be held on June 20th, 2024, from 9:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. be approved, subject to the conditions outlined below.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this file? Seeing none, if I could ask all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried, thank you. Received for information, Catfish Creek Conservation Authority, consultation period for watershed-based resource management strategy. Mover in a seconder, please. Deputy Mayor and Counselor Helpin, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Helpin, that correspondence item number one be received for information.
All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. If I could ask the Deputy Mayor to assume the chair, please?
We'll move to CEP 22.24, Consent Application, 44828 Fruit Ridge Line applicant, Jeff John and Joanne Ferguson. Mr. McClure, are you speaking to this? Oh, can I get a mover and a seconder? Counselor Watson, Counselor Connors?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. This application or report is simply a report of support, staff support for a surplus farm severance application with the Elgin County Land Division Committee. Yeah, the recommendations of the report are that the lands are to be rezoned typical of surplus farm severance, and that the typical condition of a copy of the reference plan be provided to Central Elgin, be circulated if, if the Land Division Committee does approve the application.
Thank you. Any questions? I'll call the vote. All in favor? Motion carries.
CEP 2324, 45624 Dexter Line. I see Mr. Summerville is in the audience. Could I get a mover and a seconder for this, please? Counselor Helpin, Counselor Bachman, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Helpin, seconded by Counselor Bachman, that report CEP 2324 regarding Consent Application E5224 be received for information, and that Consent Application E5224 be supported, subject to the outlined conditions, and that such support be provided to the County of Elgin's Land Division Committee for consideration.
Questions or comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried, thank you. CEP 2524, 45685 Talbot Line. If I could get a mover and a seconder, Deputy Mayor? Counselor Watson, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Watson, that report CEP 2524 regarding an application to amend the Township of Yarmouth Bylaw, Number 1998, be received, that site-specific draft amendments to the Township of Yarmouth Zoning Bylaw be prepared to satisfy conditions of a resident surplus to a farming operation, severance on lands located at the address outlined below, and that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with the legislated requirements.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried, thank you. On to the CAO. Council Schedule Amendments. If I could get a mover and a seconder, Deputy Mayor, Counselor Helpin, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Helpin, that the 2024 Municipality of Central Elgin Council Schedule be amended to remove the meetings for July 15th, 2024, and August 12th, 2024, and add a single regular planning meeting for the summer on Monday, July 29th, 2024, at 5:00 o'clock p.m., and that the updated 2024 Municipality of Central Elgin Council Schedule be posted to the municipal website and communicated to the public.
Is that okay? Questions or comments from council? Seem good? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried, thank you. Next report is from the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services, County Road Maintenance. If I could get a mover and a seconder? Counselor Bachman and Counselor Helpin, thanks.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Bachman, seconded by Counselor Helpin, that report ICS 1424 regarding County Road Maintenance Agreement be received, and that the County of Elgin be requested to explore the purchase of an asset and work order management software system to achieve consistency and accuracy between all lower-tier municipalities in Elgin County.
I am. Ms. Leach, sorry. Over to you, Ms. Heard, for a moment.
Sorry, through, through you to the Deputy Clerk, could you please read the paragraph where we approve the report as well, please, or the agreement?
And that the 2024 Elgin County Road Maintenance Agreement be approved for execution.
Perfect, thanks, Ms. Leach. Questions or comments? Seeing none, if I could, if, all those in favor? Counselor Graham.
Sorry, I had prepared an amendment for Ms. Leach to read as well.
Is counsel agreeable to an amendment?
Go second, Counselor Helpin, thank you. Over to you, Ms. Leach.
Mayor Sloan, the motion as amended, that report ICS 1424 regarding Elgin County Road Maintenance Agreement be received, that the County of Elgin, or sorry.
Ms. Heard?
That the County of Elgin be requested to explore the purchase of an asset and work order management software system to achieve consistency and accuracy between all lower-tier municipalities in Elgin County, that the 2024 Elgin County Road Maintenance Agreement be approved for execution, that once the government committee is established, as per the County Road Maintenance Agreement, staff be directed to advocate for increased funding to cover 100% of expenses related to the maintenance of county roads.
Ms. Heard?
Thank you. Great, great opportunity. So, to just explain the procedures. So, I believe Counselor Graham has asked to place an amendment on the floor. So, the first motion would be to, as the Deputy Clerk indicated, to approve the agreement, to advocate for the work plan, sorry, the work order system. Now, procedurally, if I may, then Counselor Graham is placing an amendment on the floor. So, the amendment would read that the following paragraph be added, so this is going to be added to the original, or sorry, the recommended motion, and that the, let me just pull up my computer here. The amendment would read that the following paragraph be added, that once the governance committee is established, as per the County Road Maintenance Agreement, staff be directed to request the committee compensate Central Elgin for 100% of expenses related to the maintenance of county roads. So, procedurally, council needs to vote on just that amendment, just that added paragraph, and if council chooses to agree with it or disagree with it, then we go back to the original motion as amended, and then you vote on it as a, as a full package. Does that make sense to everyone? So, procedurally, then, what's on the floor, what council is debating and voting on right now is just the amendment, and that's just that one paragraph.
Thank you, Ms. Heard, appreciate that. Now, it's time for discussion on the amendment. Questions or comments? Deputy Mayor?
Through you, Mayor. I believe there's already literature in that agreement, that there is a working group in there, but I believe Mr. Brooks can speak to that a little bit better than I can.
Mr. Brooks, sir?
Through you, Mayor Sloan, to Deputy Mayor Noble. The previous agreements had an operations committee component to the road maintenance agreement. This new agreement that we're bringing forth to council adds an additional governance component, or governance committee component to the road maintenance agreement, and under the terms of reference for that governance committee, it consists of the CAOs of the county or their delegates to, you know, govern the road maintenance agreement.
Thank you, sir. Other questions, other comments? Counselor Watson, thank you.
Yeah, through you, Mayor, to Mr. Brooks. We're looking at getting this fully funded 100%. What have we been getting paid up to this point by the county, percentage-wise?
For the past six years.
Microphone?
Over the past six years of annual financial reporting, the municipality has, on average, carried a deficit of $89,000.
Thank you, sir. Follow-up, Counselor Watson, Counselor Graham.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Jeff. Mr. Brooks, $89,000 in total? Like, for each year, $89,000 in total?
So, $89,000 per annum, appreciate it. Follow-up, Counselor Graham.
Does that also include the administrative side of it?
It does not. It only includes costs that we are able to report on, so maintenance activities, labor, and equipment.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Graham.
So, when we're talking about, in your report, when you say that it's more like 20% to 25% that for admin and overhead, but we're only getting 5%, is there a ballpark estimate of how much we're losing out on there, how much we're spending above that $89,000 every year that we're not getting reimbursed?
I can take a look at that number, but it would be in the neighborhood of around $100,000.
In total?
Additional to the $89,000.
My goodness. Counselor Graham.
Okay, just so that we're, and I'm assuming that you're just kind of ballparking that, so, but that's per annum as well, so we're losing out, or we're spending more than we're getting reimbursed, about $180,000 to $190,000 every year. Is that correct?
I think you're in the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Yes. Counselor Halpin, thank you.
As far back as when we were first doing orientation, this is a conversation that we were hearing among staff was that we are consistently losing money by this. And I think when we already have something on the table, this is a great time to have a conversation about getting that remedied.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Graham.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brooks, has there ever been, I saw that there's, if we're not being reimbursed for twenty five thousand dollars, there's a chance to go to arbitration with a third party. Has that ever been invoked at all? Or discussed?
That has not been discussed, to my knowledge, in the past. What I would suggest is, being that there is a governance committee being formed here, the Strategy Corp report that was done to support this new road maintenance agreement did suggest that there may be the opportunity to look at adjusted funding through the course of the road maintenance agreement. And I think my recommendation would be the governance committee would be a good place to start.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any other questions or comments? We're ready to vote on the amendment. All those in favor, all those in favor of the amendment? Opposed, and that's carried. Now for the main motion as amended, I have a mover and a seconder. Right? So all those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Thank you. Mover and a seconder on the bylaw. Deputy Mayor. Counselor Connors. Two eight nine six, which is to execute the agreement with Elgin County Road Maintenance.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, move by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Connors, that bylaw two eight nine six be read a first, second, third time and finally passed.
All those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. Thank you. Motion's a notice of motion. We have a motion from Counselor Bachman. Over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the motion put forward has to deal with the Kettle Creek subdivision. It is ninety-eight percent complete now. I think they only have two or three lots left. The, the side roads all have cul-de-sacs built into them, and they are now complete. With the addition of those cul-de-sacs and the complete Kettle Creek subdivision now, the Kettle Creek roadway, which is approximately a kilometer long, has seen excessive movement of vehicles. And the residents in that area have expressed numerous times the concerns over cars being, it is, it's allowed to be parked, you're allowed street parking. With cars moving in and out of vehicles and children in that neighborhood. And the new school being built eventually in that subdivision, or north end of subdivision, that it might be a good time now to put a four-way stop in there to get traffic used to that. So that kids, when they eventually have to cross the roads to get to the new school, and as well as get, get drivers accustomed to stopping halfway through that one kilometer section and slowing down the traffic.
Thank you, Counselor Bachman. Counselor Halpin has seconded the motion, so it's on the floor for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from council? Counselor Connors.
Through you, Mayor. I think it's great that we're putting stop signs up in Belmont, but in Ward Four, I've been requesting some sort of way to control speed on both McMinn and on Crescent for some time now. I've had discussions recently regarding stop signs. So I'm wondering whether we should expand this, this, these stop signs to include something in Ward Four as well.
Before we get to Ms. Heard, well, do you want to go, Carrie? I've got Counselor Graham, and then you, or you and Counselor Graham?
Certainly. So from a procedural note, Counselor Connors, is it, your amendment wouldn't be considered germane to this motion? Because it's a completely separate location. However, if it's something that you were interested, I think it may be more appropriate to put your own notice of motion, or we could waive the procedures and place a motion of yours on the floor. It's really important for, when you, when you've got a, a motion, that it just stays in regards just to this location, we deal with that. And then either you can bring one forward with the next agenda, or if council chooses to waive the procedures, then you can place a motion. I always recommend a wait, so then the public knows that we're debating that.
Thank you, Counselor Graham. Thank you, Ms. Heard.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Brooks. Has there been a traffic study, or have we looked at other measures to, to slow the speeds down?
Sir.
Staff did measure speeds on Kettle Creek Drive between May fifteenth and May twenty fourth of twenty twenty four. And we put those speeds through the traffic calming policy and the warrants, which would dictate whether or not traffic calming is warranted or not. And it was found that traffic calming would not be warranted on Kettle Creek Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Questions or comments from council? Counselor Bachman, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we just had the, the study done. This is more than just traffic calming. This is bringing kids safely from one side of the street to the other. And having that access into the school, which would eventually happen. We're looking at more of a permanent system where this is in place. It's halfway the distance, and then we get the kids filtering in from the south end of town. And there's a bypass at that particular spot as well, off West Street, which brings all the east side traffic, or students in that, through that area as well. So it's not just a cul-de-sac area. There's actually a walk-through that joins Main Street as well, that brings them through there. So that's what we're looking at. It's pedestrian as well as traffic.
Thank you. Counselor Halpin.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Brooks. Is there anything contemplated right now for the subdivision, for its future, for traffic calming, or roundabouts, or any other management?
Through the site plan of the school, they will be required to undertake a traffic impact study. We've specifically asked them to look at pedestrian traffic as well as vehicular traffic in the area. So depending on what comes out of that report, that may generate the need for some measures to be taken. Another suggestion here is that Kettle Creek Drive is due to be repaved here in the next few years. We could build in some more permanent traffic calming, you know, devices, more permanent devices in there. And, you know, build curbs and narrow the roads with curbing, that sort of thing, which would inherently slow down traffic. I wouldn't be doing my job unless I read out what the MTO traffic manual does state. It does state what the inappropriate use of an always-stop control is. And always-stop control should not be used under the following conditions. Number one, where protection of pedestrians, schoolchildren in particular, is of prime concern. This concern can usually be addressed by other means. Number two, as a speed control device. There are others, but those are the two main concerns here that we're trying to address.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Counselor Halpin, then Deputy Mayor, please.
Thank you. So supplementary to that, then, if the MTO were not going to recommend that for this purpose, what would they recommend?
There are many different types of treatments that can be considered. You can do raised intersections, you can do speed humps, speed cushions, you can use delineator posts. There are lots of different things that you can build into the roadway permanently in order to try and achieve traffic calming.
Thank you, sir. Deputy Mayor, please.
Through you, Mayor. What's the timeframe, Mr. Brooks, for the school board to do a study on this?
I would suspect that they'll be moving, while they're in the process of moving that traffic impact study forward now, as they do want to get site plan approval for their school. So I would expect in the next few months, we'll have the results of that.
Thank you. I have Counselor Connors first, and then Counselor Halpin. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor, to Mr. Brooks and to Ms. Heard. Yes, I will explore this with, with Jeff in the, in the coming, in the coming weeks to see if we can put something together. But I'm wondering also, Mr. Brooks, you know, we've talked numerous times about the traffic calming measures and the traffic studies, and, and you continually go out and you find that they're less than the eighty-fifth percentile. So your justification through the, through the procedure that you have is negative, which I understand. I'm wondering how our policy compares with other municipalities? And is it current? The reason I'm asking this, and the reason I'm bringing this to a head, is that we get so many complaints about people speeding. And I know I get a lot on McMinn and on Crescent, and obviously Counselor Bachman's getting some issues in Belmont. I'm sure there's issues in Port Stanley. Has it been looked at recently? Are we on par with other municipalities?
Just to clarify, are you asking about the eighty-five percent, Counselor Connors?
I'm asking about our policy. Is it equivalent to other centers?
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Our policy was created in twenty eighteen. It, it was basically a copy of what other municipalities in the area were using. That policy is due for a review, and I've tasked our manager of transportation and fleet to do a thorough review of our existing policy, just to make sure that it still aligns with what other municipalities are using.
Thanks, Mr. Brooks. Counselor Halpin, thank you.
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Brooks. So when the school does their traffic study for their site plan approval, will any remedies that are considered necessary as a result of that study be made prior to the construction and opening of the school, or will that sort of come tandem or subsequent?
It would all depend on what, what comes out of those, that study. If there are, you know, crosswalks that would be required for the construction of the school, those would typically be built in tandem with the school construction, because that would be most likely the responsibility of the developer to install those, those treatments, if there are minor treatments. Or we're, you know, doing a paving job on Kettle Creek Drive where we could implement some of these implements, then we could go ahead and do it beforehand.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Supplementally, supplementary supplemental, Counselor Halpin.
Thank you. Yes, I guess I can't run out of questions. If the MTO does not recommend that this is done because of speed or because of pedestrian traffic, would the council be open to amending this motion to ask staff to report back on what, between now and the construction of the school, they would recommend is an appropriate solution?
Thank you. What's the, what's the, yeah, what's the, what's the will of council on that amendment? Counselor Bachman, what are your thoughts, sir?
It's a it seems to be one of those rock and a hard place situations, I guess. We're dealing with an ongoing situation within the town. And as Counselor Connor, Connors mentioned, it's a, it's an ongoing. I realize that ninety-five percent of all drivers are responsible, and they do the responsible thing. It's that five percent that's causing the most concern in our, in our communities. This I saw, as well as in consultation with, with community members who saw speed bumps and all that thing as, as more of a hindrance when it comes to winter snow removal and blah, blah, blah. As, as a very simple solution to a complex problem. And putting in a stop sign halfway through makes the driver responsible for passing through a stop sign, which has major consequences and implications. So by putting the stop sign in, even though I realize that it doesn't follow MTO standards, we felt that within the community safety standards, this does meet the requirements for a community safety requirement.
Thank you, sir. So as for the amendment, no amendment, consideration of amendment, would you rather just us vote on the overall stop signs?
Yes.
Okay. Is that fair? Questions or comments, Counselor Graham?
Sorry, can you just describe the area for me again, Counselor Bachman?
The area, it's the north, northwest corner of Belmont. It, it's, the subdivision's been around twenty-five years, Jeff. It has just recently been completed. There were empty lots and, and fields around in the past five that have been required to be completed. So off Kettle Creek Drive, which is basically Kettle Creek joins Snyder's. It's a big U, and it's a kilometer-wide stretch at both ends that join at the very end. Landon is a lane that connects both roadways from Snyder's to Kettle Creek, and it's halfway between the two. So there's two pass-throughs. One at the very end, and one halfway through that goes, that connects the two. The school will be in that top-left corner. So Snyder's Ave, technically, there's a row of houses, and then the school, where it backs through. So the creek runs at the very bottom end. And the pass-through is in a cul-de-sac rate where Landon Lane connects. So Landon Lane and then a cul-de-sac with a pass-through that joins to Main Street. So that's quite a bit of pedestrian traffic coming through there, bikes and whatnot. It's, yeah, like a U shape with, with a yes. Where, where proposed, pardon me? Yes. Oh, sorry, we're going back and forth here. Yeah, sorry about that.
It's okay. Make sure you have your your microphones are on. I appreciate the debate. Counselor Graham, did you question?
Are we able to, like, have a picture of the subdivision? Do we have that, Mr. Brooks?
I think tonight we don't have pictures of much. Sorry. Mr. Brooks can blow it up. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to. Thanks, Mr. Brooks. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Watson.
Through you, Mayor, to Mr. Brooks. Like, what's it really going to cost us, two posts and a couple signs? To keep this, I like the idea, community safety zone. I don't care about driver vehicular safety or pedestrian safety. I do care about those things, but I mean, it's more of a safety concern, and I think this would really help out. It would get people thinking when they're driving. So I support your motion.
So, so just on that, Counselor Watson, Mr. Brooks read out at the start of this about four-way stops. You, you heard that information? Okay, so it's a little bit more, I think, as, as we were, it was being explained to us, than it's actually just the cost of the signs. Counselor Halpin.
Thank you. I had been about to say the same, that although I think when a I think when a simple solution exists, it's great to take it. If we've got an entire body of experts whose job is to study whether this does actually create a safe environment, and they say it doesn't, that is a concern for me.
Thank you. Counselor Connors, and I think we should look at time, because we're going to camera and we have two people waiting. Thank you, sir.
Through you, Mayor. Mr. Brooks, rough number of houses in that subdivision?
If I'm taking a guess here, I'm going to say that stop sign would impact approximately three hundred homes.
Thank you.
What a great idea to put a secondary entrance into that subdivision, three hundred homes.
Can I? Can I call the vote? Perfect. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. Now, other business. We have two items, one from Counselor Halpin, I'll start. With respect to the Blue Flag Beach Award, last week, we were informed that the municipality of Central Elgin has received an impressive honor that further underscores what a world-class destination we are for beachgoers. Canada has placed second in the Blue Flag International Good Practices Competition in the environmental activities on pollution prevention category, thanks to microplastics recycling and zero-waste education programs at Port Stanley's main beach. On behalf of the council, I'd like to sincerely thank the the staff in implementing these programs that have helped put Port Stanley and Central Elgin on the map for such an important reason. I also thank our residents and visitors for their support of said beach. Thank you very much. Counselor Halpin.
Thank you, Mayor Sloan. This is another thanks to staff. This month, the Association of Municipal Managers, Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario did their annual award ceremony, and our own deputy treasurer, Neil Conselman, received the municipal accounting and finance program award. So I would like to congratulate him and thank him for the work he's doing for us.
Thank you very much. Counselor Halpin. I can get a mover and a seconder to proceed into closed. Deputy Mayor, Counselor Bachman, thank you.
Mayor Sloan, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Noble, seconded by Counselor Bachman. The council proceed into closed session at seven fifty-one P M in order to address the matter pertaining to advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, and a proposed acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality, financial information supplied in confidence to the municipality, which if disclosed, could reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly the competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of an organization, a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality, and personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal employees.
All those in favor?